Hello, Tato. Welcome everyone to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council. Welcome to councillors, to staff, to the public and to the media. We do not have a public forum booked today, so we'll move on to apologies. And we've received an apology from councillor Calvert. And on a move that we accept that apology. Seconded councillor Staines. All those in favour, please say aye. I'm against, carried. We further have, as a special treat to Jenny, she's taken the notes and minutes today because it's her birthday. As a special treat, she gets the extra job. Move on to item 13. Confirmation of the agenda. Now, I would like to move that we confirm the agenda with the following changes. And my thinking is this. Items 14, 15 and 16 are acknowledgements of either committee board members, retiring members, or the final meeting of the triadium. And I think that should come at the end of the meeting, rather than non-public. So I'm going to move that we confirm the agenda with the amendment that after 13, we go into non-public. After item 13, we go into non-public. The agenda of which has been added 17 and 18. And when we have finished non-public, then we come back into public for the final part. So I'll move that from the chair, that we confirm the agenda in that manner. Seconded councillor Staines. All those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Okay, item four is declaration of interest for noting. Item five is, and I will move from the chair, but the minutes. We confirm the public part of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 19th of September 2016 as a correct record. Seconded councillor Staines. Any discussion? Councillor White.
Your worship, item 29 in the Heritage Rights Relief, I sat back.
Sorry, the...
Item 29 in the minutes. Heritage Rights Relief, I sat back and let know that was...
Oh, I see. Right, that's an amendment to the minutes. Thank you for that. All those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. On to item six, minutes of committees. Hearings Committee, councillor New.
Thank you, your worship. I'll move that council confirms the minutes of the hearings committee held on the 23rd of August 2016 as a correct record and with regards to 82, Ricketon Road, East Moesgill.
Seconded councillor Vandevos. Any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Item seven, hearings committee, councillor New.
I'll move that council confirms the minutes of the hearings committee held on the 24th of August 2016 as a correct record with regards to 10, Ricketon Road, West Moesgill.
Seconded councillor Vandevos. Any discussion? Put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. And item eight, hearings committee, councillor New.
Thank you, your worship. Further move that the council confirms the minutes of the hearings committee meeting on the 31st of August 2016 as a correct record, and that's associated with 40, Beach Street, Port Chalmers.
And seconded councillor Vandevos. Discussion? Put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Item nine, development contribution subcommittee, councillor Thompson.
I'll move that council confirms the public part of the minutes of the meeting held on 2nd of September 2016.
Seconded councillor Wilson. Thank you. Any discussion? Put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Okay, on to report. Item 10, annual report of the subsidiary social companies of Dunedin City Holdings. Global gentlemen. Okay, councillors' questions before we put anything up. Councillor New.
Just a question around city forests. The revaluation of the forest was 9.7 million. Is that an annual revaluation or is that biannually or... Doesn't, okay, thank you. And significant jump in valuation, does that just reflect the current market value? Okay.
Councillor Oliver.
I had a question actually also about city forests. I see the... I just couldn't quite understand it. I don't know, have you got the city forest cards? The accounting note number 18. I'm just trying to find it, getting there closely. Page 46 of the city forests. I'm just trying to work out why the such a huge jump for the deferred tax liabilities. Gone from 2 million to 28 million. I'm just trying to work out what's... Is that a change in procedure or is it just a... Are we looking at... Yep. All right, are you on page 18? About 46, sorry, yep. So balance at the end of the year. Oh, yep, yep, okay, see. Yep, so I'm just, I was just looking at the middle line, the balance at the end of the year, which is 28, 7, 1, 6, halfway down the page. Does that come from 29? Should that be extra zeros? Yep. So there's nothing untoward there? No, just still middle of the range, okay? No, that's all good, thank you.
Councillor Benson Pope.
My question's about Delta, Mr. Chu. Do you want to deal with them company by company or are we just going to jot them off?
No, they're all together, so I'm quite happy to...
Well, I just have a question, gentlemen, in respect of page 15 of the Delta document. Page 15 is the list of employees remuneration. And I'm just wondering if you could respond, if you can. Given the stellar performance of the company, with which we're only too familiar, I'm concerned about what I describe as the eye-watering figure paid to the chief executive, especially in light of what's on page 16 over the page around the establishment of the remuneration committee of the company. I'm wondering if you could tell me if there is any possibility that the investigations of that remuneration committee can correct what I consider considerable imbalance in the salary paid to the chief executive of that company?
DCHL, having oversight of the companies during the year, sought explanations from all the operating entities as to how they put together remuneration packages, how they were benchmarked, and also any incentive structures that were in place. We form the opinion that the work undertaken by the individual boards was satisfactory. That said, we're also embarking in the coming year at getting our own internal review done of the operating entities in terms of how they look at remuneration, so we can get some consistency across the group. But at the same time reflecting that some of the companies operate in certain sectors which will have variance to other companies. So it's a bit of work in progress. We're not saying it's wrong, and we're not saying it's right, but it's something that we're looking at to ensure that it is consistent and appropriate.
Councillor Wilson.
On that same page, or the page before, page 14. I know for the directors' remuneration, and it's just slightly different figure than that for Aurora. I know the directors are the same, but are they paid separately under each company? Or is this a double up? I mean, it's hard to tell because they are virtually the same amount that's in there. Are they split, are the directors split between two companies? Or they get one? No, that's fine. I just can't recall.
One would say it should be split between the two companies to be correct and accurate.
Councillor Vandevos.
The review that you've talked about that is being undertaken by DCHL, have you got a time when we can expect to see the results of that review? Is it weeks or months away?
It will be with the change of staff internally. It's more likely to be months, and it will be undertaken on the back of a formal acceptance of these accounts.
So we're talking the new year then, likely?
That's the reality once we get to the stage of the year, yes.
Thank you. Councillor White.
Just want to ask a question regards to dividends. When I look at Delta, they have a turnover revenue of 102k and they're paying 2.5 million dollars in dividend. When we look at Aurora, they have a turnover of 100 million and they're paying 3 million in dividend. But yet when we look at the airport, they've got a turnover of 13 million and paying a dividend of 1.4 million. That seems like quite a high percentage and also understanding the airport worth they've got going on with the construction coming up and the development.
Okay, the dividends are derived from essentially profitability as opposed to turnover. But it also takes into account their own capital requirements in the foreseeable future. So, and of course what their actual earnings were for the year. So there's probably little correlation with turnover. It's all to do with profitability and future capital expenditure requirements.
Councillor Vandevos.
Looking at the turnover of Delta and Aurora, if these were publicly owned companies with that kind of turnover, what level of profitability would you expect to see from them?
Good question. In terms of Aurora, we are governed by the pricing regime, which is overseen under the Electrical Supply Authority. So that's effectively governed by that regime. In terms of Delta, that's a bit of work in progress. And again, we are looking at ways to get more transparency and visibility of where profitability is derived, so we can make that judgement call in the future.
Regarding the profitability of Aurora, the previous chief executive of Delta, Mr. John Walsh, explained to me that one of the ways they could keep within the government guidelines was by awarding especially fat contracts to Delta. Is this a practice that is still going on now? Or do you understand some other way that they can limit their profitability without actually reducing power prices?
We have spent some time getting confidence from the Delta board as to transparency and division of earnings, and have been assured that everything's done on an arm's length basis, and that is tested against the market when rightly or wrongly they've been tending for other work. So based on what the work we've currently done, we're comfortable that there's no transfer pricing or cross-subsidisation going on.
Councillor Oliver.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Just a couple of questions about Aurora. Just wondering firstly if you could talk through the network performance stuff around interruptions and the duration of those interruptions. I understand they're statutory metrics, not about choosing. But it is a concerning trend in recent years. Is that something that's likely to be resolved through the capital investment that that company is making in its network? Or are there other forces at play here that are missing from this?
I'll caveat my answer by saying it's an awfully complex model, and we probably shouldn't be giving prizes for those who can understand it. From our interrogation into it at a high level, it appears to have a blanket performance measure across the country. So it takes no account for the fact that arguably Northland doesn't get snow and central Otago does get snow. Both those can eliminate events and one can create events. So again, there's no taking account of the real environment which can cause interruptions. That said, we are monitoring and will be working with Aurora as to issues this creates. And we're currently are engaged with Commerce Commission as to the circumstance that led to this current year's performance.
So we shouldn't be worried about impending big steps being wielded against the company for this, for its network performance?
Two wrongs don't make a right, obviously, but we're not the only people in this position. And there's potentially some sort of penalty. I wouldn't say it's immaterial, I wouldn't say it's material either. But it's sort of nature of the beast we have to operate within.
Thank you. They have a 40,000, Aurora has a $40,000 annual community sponsorship budget, of which less than half was spent in this current year. Justification being the major event they sponsor is every two years, and it didn't happen this year. Is that because of a lack of application to that fund? Is that something that anybody can apply to for support from that company for their community endeavors?
We'll have to plead the fifth here, don't know, sorry.
Councillor McTavish.
Thank you, your worship. My question also relates to non-financial outcomes and objectives. And I just note that some of the annual reports have sort of transposed the work that we did earlier in the year through the letter of expectations in the subsequent statement of intent, and have reported directly on them. And that's great to see, so full marks to those companies. Some of the others have not done that directly. And I just wondered whether that's something which is still flowing through or whether there's a need for a conversation with companies involved about this being a great place to offer that transparent feedback around how they're delivering.
Yeah, totally appropriate point, and it is work in progress. Some are grasping it quicker than others. Often we get caught short in the timeframe to actually stamp our feet on these issues. But it's certainly from a DCHL level, we're very cognizant of it, and we are encouraging the operating entities to be quite clear and articulate better what they do in that respect. Such work in progress.
And in terms of just assessing the... Maybe this is a question for you, Sue. But assessing performance against those non-financial objectives. Is there a staff team that kind of works through that as these come through and kind of talks about how there might be improvements in performance over the next year? Or how does that work?
So the mayor and I meet with DCHL board regularly and from time to time with the chair and CEO of each of the subsidiary company boards. This is a new process. We discuss kind of key items that come up. We haven't had a formal checklist related to those letters of expectation, but actually it wouldn't be hard for us to do that, actually.
Councillor White.
Thank you, your worship. Just following up on my question about the dividends. When I look at the airport, they're paying approximately 70% of their net profit, or their profit for dividend. And yet with Delta, it's slightly over 50%. And with Aurora, it's slightly under 50%. Is there a formula that you're sort of working on? But I'm surprised that the airport is so high.
That's probably a reflection of the other shareholder, possibly. Again, it comes down to, when I asked the question before, future capital requirements. The other issue that's also taken into account is the equity ratio as it stands at the time. The airport has a high equity ratio, so therefore they can afford to pay a higher stream of dividends proportionally. Whether you go, if you go down to Delta, has a lower equity ratio, and hence they've had a lower proportion paid out. So the equity ratio is another key measure.
Any further questions? Would someone like to move the recommendation? Councillor New. Seconded councillor McTavish. Discussion? Who's to speak, councillor New?
Just briefly, your worship. I can't recall over the years when all the companies have been making profits. And you might argue with the strong cash flows and also reduction in debt and reinvestment into their assets, and being able to enjoy a low interest rate environment, low inflation. It just seems to be we're in a sweet spot at the moment, and long may it continue.
Further speakers? Okay, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Thank you. On to item 11, the Dunedin City Council annual report. Hello, Mr. Tobin. So we're joined by Mr. Tobin, who is the auditor of our report. Would you like to start or anything, or just to extract questions?
The only thing I've located, so...
Just please, sorry, I'll take that quite close.
I'm going.
I'm part of a report on the council's in groups manager statements.
Okay, questions, councillors?
Still haven't heard what is being first on.
Sorry, could you repeat that statement?
I'll be issuing an unqualified audit report on the counselling rules on issue.
Councillor Thompson.
Scott, look, my question's just a process one, and it's not applicable in the current situation where, as you've just said, there's no issues that leading to any kind of qualification of the audit or whatever. But it's a slightly ass-about-face way that we're doing this, and I wonder if there's a way of avoiding that in future? Because essentially we're being asked to approve an annual report that's missing an auditor's report. We can't get an auditor's report until we've signed a letter of representation. And whilst in this case, I'm quite comfortable about that because I've had the opportunity to talk with you and you've just, you know, informed everybody of the fact that there aren't any issues. Is there a way that this can be avoided in future?
The local government requires an annual report to be adopted, including the audit. Essentially, if you were to follow, you would adopt the annual report. I wish my opinion, you would adopt your opinion in the annual report, including the penalty. So we've taken a pretty pragmatic approach this year and in previous years, which is we've signed that after discussion with the auditors. It's a process, you know that the answer's going to be. So I regard the process as probably better fit the vision going to keep given the constraints, as you pointed out, in terms of process.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councillor Vandevos.
Could this process have been done earlier in such a way that we would be able to do the final tick-off as usual at this meeting? Or was there simply not enough time for you to address the audit issue?
So, fun meeting, we had four weeks ago, we grew last year. Because obviously the transition process is in train. But obviously, working with Scott, we're having a bit of next year's time code to see because I think we're going to say whether we can actually address a little bit of that. Obviously, for a reference, that was on Thursday, which is not ideal. So we'll work for that process for next year.
So just to confirm, you think it's quite possible that next year we're going to be able to avoid the slight wrinkle and have this sorted in advance of the final meeting?
We can work on, on getting that improved.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Someone like to move the recommendations on page 74? Councillor Thompson. Seconded councillor Staines. Councillor Thompson, do you wish to speak? Any further speakers? I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Okay, on to item 12, delegations in the interregnum period. Sandy, is that you?
Is that working?
Right, I understand you want to introduce the item.
Councillors, there was just one small change to the recommendations to make in front of you. Recommendation A, Roman numeral, or Roman letter I. In the second line, we have that line reading Aaron Hawkins and David Benson Pope. I'd like to adjust that so it reads Aaron Hawkins or David Benson Pope.
Okay, that's the only change?
Yes.
Is there anything else you want to preface? Questions, right, questions. Councillor Buzet.
Sorry, I was just going to move option 1, that was it.
All right, okay, well, I'll come back to you. Questions? Don't appear to be any, all right, that's been moved. Is there a second, please? Councillor Lord. Do you wish to speak to it, councillor Buzet? Further speakers? I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. We move on to item 13, notice of motion. And I will invite either councillor McTavish or councillor Bates-Pope. It would appear to be councillor McTavish, so, who are yours?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair, your worship. I'd like to just preface this motion with a note that, particularly for members of the ORC staff who are here in the audience, that I was a bit disappointed with the reporting in today's OTT. And the reason for that is that this motion, notice of motion specifically, did not criticise the Otago Regional Council. It does raise some concerns about the bus hub in its current location and design, but it was not intended to be a criticism of the process to date. Simply a red flag that potentially at this juncture, there is a need to step back and for both councils collaboratively to do some thinking about whether or not this is the best location and the best design. So to explain the notice of motion, I think when you look at any of the truly great small cities of the world, there is one effectively defining feature of them, and that is that they have extremely functional public transport systems that are integrated, that promote integration across modes, and that support a really accessible, vibrant CBD. Recognising this, the ORC earlier in the triadium actually approached this council and asked whether or not we'd like to take over governance of the public transport system, noting the potential for alignment with a lot of the functions that we have responsibility for, including management of the local roading network, but also urban development planning. This council supported that transfer in principle subject to the...
Point of order, your worship. I'm sorry, councillor McTavish. I hadn't realised that you're going to introduce it to debate and you've given councillor McTavish the opportunity to speak to that. I thought you'd preface your explanation with how the notice of motion came to be here today and not the body of the motion and the debate and your arguments that support...
So what's the point of order?
The point of order is that I think this is an aggressive approach to take, given the comments on the chairman of the regional council this morning, that he was surprised to see the comments of the two movers.
Well, can I, I'll rule on the point of order.
Well, can I? Sorry, okay.
Well, this, whether or not you think it's aggressive is not a basis for a point of order.
Well, therefore, can I move that, the motion line on the table?
Well, I'm not sure if you can or not. But to answer your question about how it came to be here, it came to be here through the legitimate process of putting a notice of motion in time for this meeting.
Fine, I just need that explained, but if I can, procedural motion. Can I move the line on the table?
So can I just ask for some advice, please? Point of order, your worship. Okay, my advice is that the speaker in the notice of motion has the floor and can finish, and at that point, anyone who hasn't spoken can raise a point of order, no, a procedural motion at that point, we can, if you have a second, you can, we can vote on it. But in the meantime, councillor McTavish has the floor, as is proper.
Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. So I guess, where I was at, I was explaining that the ORC had come to us and had invited us to take on public transport governance role. We had said, well, yep, we're interested in investigating that, having a look into that, and for a range of reasons, the investigations into that have not progressed fast. That being said, the ORC have absolutely understandably and endorse it, progressed with their public transport improvement programme, which includes development of plans around a bus hub. Council have requested over time, over the last couple of years, some close collaboration around that, and have been, I think, some discussions about that at a staff level, which we were briefed on last week by council staff and the chairman. I'm proposing this motion not because I have any issue with those staff discussions, and certainly it's, again, reiterating, it's not the intention of this motion to be aggressive in any way, it's simply because I think that there is an urgent need for both councils to step back, to work together in that spirit of collaboration, to consider the bigger picture and the longer term before making any decisions. It's public knowledge, and it was reiterated to those of us who attended the briefing, I think it was last week, could have been the week before, that the bus hub is proposed to be on Great King Street, between Moire Place and St Andrew Street, and that the nature of that is intended to be a 12-bus on-street bay system with some toilets and some on-street shelters and some landscaping. There has been limited public discussion around the location of this, and whilst the ORC is intending to do a, as I reiterated last week, a public consultation post-election, this is not, they reported to us, intended to consider, or open debate on the location. Whilst the ORC have been progressing with this planning, again, I reiterate, absolutely understandably, there have been some discussions happening both within this council and within other entities outside of this council about other major capital infrastructure works projects, which I think have some potential for, well, they rely very much on the success of a good 21st century bus hub. Things that come to mind, the central city plan, over $30 million of ratepayers' money intended to be invested in that, the hospital rebuild, which I think is top of everybody's mind, and also several other major entities which are considering, including the tertiary precinct upgrades, and other private entities that are considering major investments in new buildings in the CBD. All of these require our bus hub to be really well-functioning, really strategically located, very well-designed. Looking at other cities around the world, and indeed, cities in New Zealand, in suburbs of Auckland, actually, there is a trend towards off-street bus hubs, where there are a range of functions provided, so not just the bus functions, but also ticketing and information services and commercial spaces where people can sit in comfort and warmth, have a cup of coffee, read the paper, whatever. They place a strong link, strong focus on links with other forms of transport, on proximity to key destination facilities, on proximity to vehicle storage facilities, and in many places, they're actually co-locating with destination facilities to ensure that there is an equal improvement for both patronage and for those destination facilities themselves. It was suggested last week at the briefing that the nature of the bus hub that is proposed is commensurate with the 2.2 million trips that we see on public transport in Dunedin every year. My argument, and the reason I've tabled this motion today, is that the very nature of the bus hub will be fundamental in determining whether or not this patronage grows. Indeed, a quality bus hub, I would argue, is actually more important when you have a less frequent service, because people have to spend more time sitting around. So if you're a grandmother and you've got grandkids, you're much more likely to use the bus if there's a quality off-street facility where you can sit down in the warmth, in the comfort, knowing that your kids are going to be entertained for that period of time. A visiting friend from Auckland over the weekend said to me, Jen, you can't sort out your public transport retrospectively. You know, Auckland is going through this process at the moment, they're trying to retrofit in good public transport facilities, and it's painful and it's expensive. We need to front-foot excellent public transport facilities here so that we have an urban form that responds to that, not trying later to retrofit that in. So I guess, I mean, it's my view that possibly this current proposed location, this on-street facility, is a pragmatic interim response to the operational needs of the ORC, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe this is an excellent long-term location, but it does strike me that there is a limited opportunity to have this conversation. We are probably the only place in New Zealand at the moment that is looking at pretty much a complete redevelopment of its CBD. All of the major players are redeveloping. And if we miss the opportunity to embed some of that thinking about collaboration and co-location now, then that's going to be a real missing, you know, we could miss a trick. It would be a real shame. And so this motion today, it's not seeking to be aggressive, it's not seeking to upset anybody, it's just seeking to put a marker in the sand for both incoming councils, saying, let's have a conversation, let's step back, let's collaborate, let's talk about some of the opportunity that exists here, and let's get the best possible outcome for Dunedin. And that is, your worship, what I was hoping to say, thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Van Hees.
I've got absolutely no problem with wanting to collaborate with the regional council to try and get a good outcome for our bus service, and as such, recommendations A, B, and C, although I don't think they say much, are actually quite reasonable, quite common sense, and I don't have a problem with those. However, if we go through to D, E, F, G, and H, they all make rather specific references to the bus hub. And in this paper, there is absolutely no information on the bus hub from which councillors could actually make an informed decision. In the absence of any report, in the absence of any bus hub information, I believe that it would be very unwise for council to express concern about the bus hub when we don't know what bus hub we're talking about. Reiterates the request made to the Otago Regional Council regarding the proposed bus hub. All of those issues from D through to H, I believe, cannot be appropriately addressed without proper information, without a report from staff. I'm quite happy to look at those things when we have information, but I don't see how we even can note or reiterate or express concern over something for which there is absolutely not one jot of information in our agenda. So I would like to move as a consequential motion that the recommendations A, B, and C stand, but that we do not include recommendations D through to H for wanted information on which to vote.
I'm happy to accept a consequential motion, however, I suspect that it would be futile in the event we put them all to the vote and they go through, we're not going to be able to have a motion put up that would contradict that. So I think probably the best...
I'm anticipating that this won't be voted for, and that in the event that the vote for these recommendations fails, that as a consequential motion, we just recommend A, B, and C. That was mine.
Thank you for saying that, okay. Councillor Bazet?
Look, I'm not going to move a procedural motion, I agree entirely with what councillor McTavish said, I have no argument with that. My argument, really, or my concern with the process, that's all it is, and it's really, if you want to work with the regional council, you don't sneak up with them and surprise them with headlines in the Otago Daily Times, as obviously the chairman was in the last couple of days. So if we are going to work with the regional council, and we certainly are going to have to do that, we should be looking at this stage to form a really good relationship with them, if the two councils are going to work together, we shouldn't be having a debate in the media without having the initial information chaired as councillor Van Hees has expressed, for both councils to come to some sensible conclusion. So I'm not, I'm just not happy with the process.
Well, can I just, for the benefit of the media, can I just clarify some of the comments that councillor Bazet has just made? This is well signaled, was well signaled to the ORC at a briefing only last week, and I've had a personal conversation with the chair of the ORC subsequent to that, so it is not, I don't think it's fair to say that this motion has surprised them in the media, just to clarify that, because that's not the case.
Now, the further speakers? Councillor Lord?
Look, I went to the briefing last week, and the thing that disappoints me about this, and I can't support it either, and it's just the fact that in that briefing, Richard Saunders addressed the meeting first up, and he said that we are collaborating, and he was pleased that DCC staff were collaborating with the ORC and also with NZTA, and I feel that that's happening at a management level. I think as a governance level, we already made a decision that we thought this area was good, and we put it in the centre city plan, and I'm of the opinion now that it should the staff working on it from the ORC and DCC decide that if the option came back that this wouldn't work and it wasn't appropriate site, at that point, I imagine is when we would kick it for touch. I just feel this isn't probably an appropriate way of dealing with it either. I'm like Lee, I can support A, B, C, I'd probably even support D, E, and F, but certainly G and H, that's, you know, I just don't think that's the way to win friends, to be quite honest.
Further speakers? Councillor Wilson?
Thank you, your worship. I'm supportive of this, and I reiterate, though, that the expression of councillor McTavish in putting this, that it isn't an aggressive approach, I think that these were discussed at a workshop last week, and I actually think it's about, the process has been a long one for the Otago Regional Council, they've used, which I wasn't aware of, our consultation process of the centre city plan to consult with the community about the location of the hub, but it wasn't a type of consultation that I think has a rigor in hindsight, and I wasn't aware at the time, that gives me confidence about the buy-in or the opportunity of the public to buy into that discussion. What's more concerning is understanding, and again, it's not a criticism, it's just the way the process has gone, and perhaps the council should have taken, or had we had a governance-to-governance level consultation on this, we would have got a better result, but actually, we haven't got the modelling yet, and it's really hard to keep on going down one track when we need to see what the modelling, the effect on the road layout, the effect on verandas round corners, the effect on other businesses. And so I see this as an opportunity of working with the regional council to say, can we just take your foot off the accelerator for a minute, can we just look at how this is going to work as a city, because it affects our roads and it affects the way our people in our city go round, can use the public transport system, and how car drivers can use the roads. It may have some substantial consequences. So I think this was an olive branch, really, to say, working together, we may get a better result, and on that basis, I am supportive of it. I would hate, it depends on how the ODT write their things up, as aggressive or not, I don't see it as an aggressive move at all, I see it as a way of assisting the regional council to come to a different outcome, or consider alternative outcomes.
Councillor P?
Thank you, your worship. Now, for me, this motion has kind of an echo of our last meeting where we were considered another hub, the South Dunedin Community Hub, and you'll recall, most of you, that we were invited to let it lie until the next triennium. I think what that was about was to make a statement that South Dunedin Community needed a bit of reassurance that we were driving ahead with something. I see this in a similar light, as making a statement that we are keen to collaborate with the ORC, and it sort of says that in the early parts of the motion, but that we have, you know, new developments in prospect in the city, and maybe Great King Street is not quite the right place, and maybe there is something a little bit grander that we could be doing. For me, it's, in the end, both our councils need to be looking at something that is going to deliver increased patronage, that is the main thing. For me, having worked in the regional council on this issue for some years, it's all about three Cs, convenience, cost, and comfort. And convenience is by far the most important thing, and a hub has to be that, it has to be convenient for people, and it has to increase people's interest in taking buses, and it has to be integrated with the infrastructure that we're going to see unfold around Great King Street in the future, further up in the next block, I know, but those things are important, so I'm happy to support them as they stand.
Speaker?
Thank you, your worship. I have some reservations about the last two recommendations, and my reasons are around the importance of both local authorities being able to work together, particularly, we are the roading authority, so we clearly need a close working relationship with the Otago Regional Council, and if the last two motions were perhaps modified to be more embracing, and perhaps I will take councillor McTavish's advice in terms of moving an amendment for the last two, but also the funding model, clearly NZT are involved there, so we need to be mindful that there are other stakeholders in this. And what I took out of the briefing the other day was, we've very much got a concept in front of us at this point, Great King Street seems to be the frontrunner for the preferred site, it's subject to public consultation, as councillor McTavish has alluded to, and clearly, we are going to be expressing a particular view, when I say we, the Dunedin City Council, through that process, but I'd just like to think that there is, I'm sure there's wriggle room here, and I think the best way to achieve that wriggle room and an outcome that suits both councils is that, you know, we have the olive branch, and maybe the branch there at the moment hasn't got quite the olive feel about it. So if those last two motions could be toned down a little, and I'll cast my mind to suggesting some amendments to those two, otherwise I can support the rest.
Does it have to be greener?
Your words, not mine. Are there further speakers? Okay, councillor Bazet, if you... Well, I'm going to speak.
If I may, or do you want to...
Yeah, no, you're far away, this is not...
Well, it won't surprise, it won't surprise councillors to know that I support this motion, and I don't think there's any major issue about aggression or confrontation, but there is an issue about concern. I have been involved as one of the parties representing this authority, assessment of the responses to a request for tender that the regional council made in respect of the Great King Street site. I can't discuss that, but I can say that in general, I think the Great King Street site is potentially a very strong site because of the lack of conflict with other associated retail, because of the presence of the police station, because of the proximity to George Street, the Octagon, and Moire Place. But it's also fair to say there are considerable concerns, and my understanding is that our staff have repeatedly voiced these concerns in respect of... staff have repeatedly voiced these concerns in respect of the logistics of the site, not the site on, the configuration of the site on Great King Street itself, but the issues around vehicle movement, especially bus movement, uh, and the difficulty of negotiating a lot of corners, and the consequences for traffic movement, parking and other issues around, um, the lifespan of verandas and such, depending on road camber. And as far as I'm aware, and this, uh, I understand has repeatedly been discussed and asked about, um, as yet we have no agreement about the magnitude of those effects, or indeed, uh, how many corners are involved. And I think that has to be a matter of concern. At the same time, we're aware of, uh, other, and, and these have been elegantly articulated, other extraordinarily significant developments in, in our urban scape. Uh, in particular, our own investment, uh, immediate investment coming imminent investment, not quite imminent enough, but nonetheless, on the very short horizon for major developments in our main shopping precinct. We know that, uh, there is a need to reconfigure our major hospital, and most people would assume, I hope rightly, that it will be, uh, somewhere on a central city site adjacent or where it currently exists. We know the university, uh, the campus is expanding in all sorts of ways around the medical precinct, and we know that we own a site on Frederick Street. Whether some of these boxes can be ticked in terms of combining, uh, for a better outcome for everyone than possible at the moment, I don't know, but I think we should look at it, and I think we'd be really remiss in a wider urban responsibilities if we didn't have a very good look at it. Ironically, uh, the budget, uh, levels that the ORC have committed for this project mean that it's clearly not going to have a high level of amenity, uh, in the short term anyway, and that may be, may be a very good thing. It may be that because of what is posed at the moment, if it proceeds and is logistically doable, uh, that the consequences of making a decision about a, a better version, a more extensive version, or a different version close by or elsewhere, or a complementary version may be less painful in terms of that cost. Uh, and so for me, that is what this issue is about. We all know, uh, we spend a lot of time talking about making our city, uh, an even better one of the world's great small cities, but we have some major problems about public transport, about the age of the fleet, about the size of the vehicles and so on. And I sent to councillors earlier a response that came from a resident this morning to me who read the OTT and said, well, what about small electric buses on George Street, on a pedestrianized George Street? So there are plenty of level, there are plenty of people interested in lots of facets of this conversation, and that, that information needs to be included. Because clearly, if we are going to take full advantage of the compact nature of the city, it's vibrant retail and a shopping street unlike so many cities in this country, let alone overseas, we need to make sure we get this decision right in the short and medium term, and that will involve a much improved public transport system, uh, and that being located in an appropriate place that complements, uh, other demands and other needs of our community. We know from other discussions we've had about the change in healthcare, about the increased, hugely increased number of visits by people of my generation and older, I guess, uh, who will be going to outpatient services at the hospital, uh, and who may well benefit immensely from some sort of co-location or co-location option. So there are older people and baby boomers, councillor McTavish. Um, so I think we have a responsibility to look at this carefully. I don't think anyone should take any offence by us looking rationally at options that need to be considered, and I think this is a sensible message for our community and an invitation for them to, um, get up to speed with what's happening and to be involved as well.
Further speakers? All right. I, sorry, yes. Oh, councillor Thompson, sorry.
Um, look, I, I'm, I'm in support of the motion, but I, I do think that there's something missing, which is what happens next? Um, at, at the moment, it, it expresses a concern, um, but it doesn't express a next step. And I just wonder, um, whether or not, it might be stating the bleeding obvious, but whether or not it, it shouldn't just have an eye on it, which is that, um, that the, the mayor, um, or whoever is the mayor, um, next week, um, be requested to approach the regional council for a further discussion at a governance level. Otherwise, it stops at the, um, expressing concern and reiterating previous requests. And I wonder if councillor McTavish would consider that.
There's been a couple of suggestions. Councillor Noon has just flagged up some possible rewording of G and H, and, um, I'd be happy to entertain that. The problem is, is that this is a formal process. I've spoken, um, most people have spoken, so I'm not sure how easily I can amend that. Um, it could just be a, a consequential, Richard, um, yeah, unless the meetings of, of a mind to be informal about it and see if we can all work together and find something that we're all happy with.
Um, well, I haven't spoken, and I intend to, but I, if it's, it appears to be the will of the, um, meeting that accommodation be made or adjustment be made, um, that's the first thing. Second thing is, I intend to allow the meeting to vote on each of these separately, so that takes care of some of the concerns about voting for some things and not for others. Um, so Sandy, what's the, what, what?
It's just that, um, no issue, except that I think you probably need to take some advice in respect of standing order 394, which is, uh, specific.
I don't know that one.
Specific about changing notice of motion. Uh, and it, it reads that notice of motion may be ordered only by the mover on the movers, or the mover's nominee with the consent of the meeting. So, I mean, I have no issue with a, a suggestion either, um, provided I know what it is, but there is that standing order in the way unless, um, the mover and second are recruited.
Can I ask, um, either you or Sandy, whether that is limited to the mover? Well, obviously it can't be limited to the mover not speaking, because they speak first. So that can happen at any time I take it. So.
With your leave, Mr Chair, I just wonder whether it would be okay to call a brief adjournment so that we could have councillor Noon's wording and councillor Thompson's suggested addition and see if we can, um, come to a position that encompasses all of it.
I think it's a good idea. I'll move from the chair that we adjourned for sufficient time for you to do that. Second, councillor Staines. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, my understanding is that, um, some consensus has been arrived at, uh, by the various parties, i.e. the mover and the suggesters. However, it has to have the consent of the meeting, so is, does anyone have any disagreement with, uh, this being amended as, as been indicated?
So, so just to clarify what it is, um, the, the amendment would be to remove G and H as they stand and to replace them with these two, um, suggested by councillor Noon and councillor Thompson, respective of the mover and the second are agreeable to that.
So, I'll read them out for the benefit of everyone. The council, replace G and H with, that council encourages both councils to continue to work collaboratively, to achieve a mutually beneficial outcome for the proposed bus hub and a new H, that the mayor be requested to approach the Ataga Regional Council for discussion on the issues raised at a governance level. Does anybody have any disagreement with that becoming the new set of, parts of the new motion, given that we are going to take it, they are going to take them separately? There being no disagreement, we will resume. Um, and I just wish to add my comments before I ask or write a reply. Um, can I say for a start, in a sense reiterating the mover's comments, that the current site that's been, uh, identified by, uh, the ORC for the bus hub may very well be the best one. But events and developments have definitely overtaken planning, uh, in the North Dunedin area and the central city area. It is, it has become incredibly dynamic, and even things that appeared simple, um, just a few months ago, like the hospital upgrade, are looking increasingly complex. And I don't mean that they're being delayed, I just mean that they may become far more complex and far more, um, far larger in, in scope than was previously envisaged. Aspects like projections of patient demand will have, for various services, and I was informed today, uh, by one of the heads of the med school, that one of the areas that will have the most increased in demand is orthopedics. And orthopedics suggests impacts very much on transportation modes and the proximity of them to the services that are required. I had a meeting the other day with primary care administrators, and they talked about the shift to community, uh, based care that may be in the central city and may not be. So what I'm pointing out is that the demand for, well, the demand in the future for services and therefore for transportation to those services in the central city is changing as we watch. And, um, I, I don't think that anybody, if they just sat down now, would have the answer to what we should do. What this, uh, this set of resolutions is suggesting is that we need to take account of that change and that dynamism, and all step back, um, and consider how best to optimise the synergies that are potentially there. Offline, I have spoken to, uh, the people at the, in governance positions in the ORC, at the university, at the DHB and at primary care administrative level, and they all agree, every one of them, that it is essential that some, some consultation and collaboration at a very high level be undertaken, uh, for this area. I just think that it's important that council expresses its commitment to that. That is, to me, what this, um, set of resolutions is about. So I urge everyone, um, to, to support. councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Um, I think the concern I have, and it's been partly articulated by others around the table, is that, uh, the level of service that is proposed to be offered by this project is largely predicated on, uh, current, the current rate of usage of the public transport system, or at least, uh, low or insignificant growth, uh, of our public transport system, um, matching our, matching the trajectory of our population. And we've talked about, um, the shifting demographics and, and the changing nature of, uh, health needs within those shifting demogra-, uh, shifting demographics. Um, but we haven't addressed, um, really ideas around, um, I mean, that's just, that's, that's very passive, uh, in terms of reacting and responding to those changing needs, rather than looking at something that will actively encourage and actively increase, um, the appeal and the, the uptake of public transport of our bus service here in Dunedin. Um, the regional council aren't particularly interested in transformational change of our public transport system that would enable that. Um, during the, the review of the regional public transport plan, a discussion of, uh, of wholesale discussion around the fears for our bus service, um, wasn't, um, wasn't on the table for those discussions, um, which was a shame, I think, because, uh, as has been pointed out, it's one of the three most significant drivers of increased usage of our bus service. Um, the zone structures, uh, were, uh, were addressed, and I, I do acknowledge that, um, particularly in the outer routes, it is cheap enough for a lot of people to use our bus service. Improvements are being made in terms of, of the legibility of the service, um, but perhaps not, uh, just perhaps with a, without the urgency or the ambition that one might hope to see, um, for the, for the development of a system that is worthy of one of the world's great small cities in the 21st century. And I think, uh, that lack of urgency or lack of ambition, uh, rolls over into the calibre of the fleet, uh, fine diesel relics that rumble around the city, as been pointed out, as has been pointed out by councillor Benson-Pope, uh, but also, um, this, uh, the, the central city bus hub project, uh, as well. Um, and I support these, uh, these motions, particularly around the, you know, the ongoing collaboration between, uh, the two, uh, two authorities. Uh, but I do find it astounding that no direct public engagement or consultation has taken place on this project, um, either its form or its function. A, a project that is, um, so significant to our transport network, so significant for the urban design of our central city, how it works with a central city plan, uh, with the DHB developments, uh, with the, the, the work being done in the campus precinct. And so while I certainly support this, um, I do think there has to be more active involvement and more active, uh, engagement from our community as to what they want to see, um, and, and how they want to see such a thing as this function. It is hugely significant, um, it is a once in a generation, um, opportunity to be able to do it, and we need to do it once, uh, and do it right. And if that isn't going to work for the current operational needs of the regional council, I would suggest doing, uh, the bare minimum now to not get in the way of that, uh, and, and not put ourselves in a situation where we can't be a little more ambitious, uh, in the medium term about servicing, uh, our city's transport network, um, and to continue our ongoing quest to be one of the world's great small cities. Thanks.
Are there any further speakers before I come back to the right of reply of the mover? There aren't. councillor McTavish.
Thank you, your worship. And I think, um, it's really great to see some good discussion happening about this. I, I think if nothing else, that's what this notice of motion has, um, begun. Uh, I, this is such a central issue to the future of Dunedin, and I, I think we underestimate that. Um, I, I know that we're going through effectively a version two of our central city plan thinking, so I think that, that the opportunity is there to, um, to wrap all this up together and, and do a great collaborative process around this in the same way that staff have been working very collaboratively around South Dunedin in recent times. So, um, the precedent's there, um, the opportunity's there. Um, I, I, I would stress again, I mean, I won't be here to continue this conversation, um, but I, I think, um, you know, you only have to look at places like Toadanga that are really struggling, having grown without public transport. You know, you talk to councillor Cowley up there and others who have got serious concerns about public transport up there, and they're just finding it really hard to retrofit it in. So we need to do it now while we still have the opportunity to do it really well before, um, Dunedin grows, uh, too much in the absence of that network. So, um, the bus hub is critical to that, and, um, I'm, I'm delighted, um, by the amendment. Thank you councillor Noon and councillor, uh, um, Thompson. I think, um, uh, the, the critical element is there, which is that ongoing conversation, um, and, and perhaps that will pick up in terms of, um, the, the frequency and the depth of that. Um, looking forward to seeing how that happens from the other side of the wall.
Thank you. Now, as I said, I will be putting each of these separately, so, um, all those in favour of A, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. All those in favour of B, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. All those in favour of C, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. All those in favour of D, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded please.
Thank you. councillor Van Devis, and that is carried.
Division of both.
Sorry?
Division of both.
On that one?
Yep.
Right, so the division on D.
councillor Benson-Pope. I'm sorry.
Aye.
councillor Bez.
Aye.
councillor, yeah, councillor Hall.
Aye.
councillor Hawkins.
Aye.
councillor Lord.
Aye.
councillor McTavish.
Aye.
councillor Noon.
Aye.
councillor Pete.
Aye.
councillor Staines.
Aye.
councillor Thompson.
Aye.
councillor Van Devis.
No.
councillor Wiley.
Aye.
councillor Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Cal.
Aye.
Motion carried, thirteen one.
Right, we'll move on to E. All those in favour of E, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded please.
Division of both.
Division.
Happy birthday, Jenny.
councillor Benson-Pope.
Aye.
councillor Bez.
Aye.
councillor Cow-, oh, no, councillor Hall.
Aye.
councillor Hawkins.
Aye.
councillor Lord.
Aye.
councillor McTavish. councillor Noon.
Aye.
councillor Pete.
Aye.
councillor Staines.
Aye.
councillor Thompson.
Aye.
councillor Van Devis.
No.
councillor Wiley.
Yes.
councillor Wilson.
Yes.
mayor Cal.
Aye.
Motion carried, thirteen one.
Councillor Benson-Pope, do you want to have the vote before you call for a division or just go for a division?
Well, I'm entirely in your head.
All those in favour of F, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded please.
Can we have a division, please? Division. That's why Steve Hudson's voice has got very deep.
Councillor Benson-Pope?
Aye.
Councillor Bezette?
Aye.
Councillor Hall?
Aye.
Councillor Hawkins?
Aye.
Councillor Lord?
Aye, just to make a change.
Councillor McTavish?
Common sense.
Councillor McTavish?
Aye.
Councillor Noon?
Aye.
Councillor Pete?
Aye.
Councillor Staines?
Aye.
Councillor Thompson?
Aye.
Councillor Vandervis?
No.
Councillor Wiley?
Yes.
Councillor Wilson?
Yes.
Me, Carl?
Aye.
Motion carried, twelve two.
On to G, and I'll remind council that G is now on the wall and not on your order paper. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. And H on the wall, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. That is that. Thank you.
Very good.
Now, I will move from the chair that we move into non-public for the reasons given on the order paper. Secretary councillor Staines, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Well, now we're on to item fifteen, which involves some of our own, as it were. The way I intend to do this, as I have we have a number of components to this, if you like. There is the recommendation that we need to discuss and vote on. There are some certificates here that I will be handing out to members that are stepping down. As I indicated earlier, I'm going to give those that are stepping down the opportunity to make a valedictory speech, and I'm also going to give the rest of council the opportunity to pay tribute where they feel it's appropriate. And the order in which I'm going to do that is we will discuss the recommendations and vote on them. And then, one by one, I intend to give the certificates and then invite that member to speak. And we'll go through each of the departing members speaking, and then I will come back to council and offer the opportunity to other councillors to speak about their colleagues who have stepped down, if they so wish. So I'll move from the chair. The recommendations on page eighty-five, secretary councillor Staines. Bearing in mind that you will have the opportunity to speak to specifics of this, but obviously, given that it's a resolution, you're welcome to speak to it now, but you may be repeating yourself. So is there anyone who feels there's something they have to say to this now, rather than when they... Councillor Bezette?
Well, just to make a point of order, your worship, and I'm absolutely right on this one. The recommendation with regards to myself is wrong. The council wishes to record it sincere, thanks to councillor Bezette, from the years nineteen eighty-nine to ninety-two and nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and sixteen. I, in actual fact, was elected to the Dunedin City Council in nineteen eighty-three. And I've got a photograph to prove. And I'll hand it round because I'd like you all to have a look at those councillors, because there was some very wonderful people who I served with at that time. But I think you should change it, and I guess if you're going to give me one of those certificates, providing you all agree that I should get one, you're going to have to change the dates.
Well, in advance, councillor Bezette, I apologise for the fact that your certificate is incorrectly printed. And whilst I will give you this copy now, can I guarantee you a second one? So you'll actually get two, albeit that one will be wrong.
Well, as a matter of fact, if I might interrupt again. I'll be getting three, because I served from nineteen eighty-three to nineteen ninety-two. Then I had three years off the council. At that time, I got a certificate and a little thing that said, "Well done." So that was one. That's another, and I'll get the corrected version in due course.
You'll get a cabinet to put them next. So it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, I will put the recommendations, subject to the amendment of the date, which was very remiss of us, on councillor Bezette's record.
It's a new council. It's a nineteen eighty-nine council.
Sorry?
It's a no decision.
Nineteen, sorry, your worship, nineteen eighty-nine, the councils changed quite considerably in area, and that's why I think that date was taken, because nineteen eighty-three, it was a different council.
We'll sort something that appropriately acknowledges.
I think that's going to hear, is that councillor Bezette should not be denied the credit for the extra six years that's not recorded on his certificate, in my view. Okay, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried.
Okay. Why don't we get double?
Now, first, on to the certificates, and the first certificate which I am going to be going to is to councillor Thompson.
I always go last.
Well, it's all part.
Oh, right. Pretty good. I made a few notes in case I got sued or something. I thought it was better to stick to the script. I'm going to miss our little get-togethers. My decision to go was really based on necessity rather than desire. The last year has been very difficult to manage, and I've not always been able to do so, particularly in the last few months or so. And I knew I certainly couldn't do another three years of juggling three full-time roles. And councillor Bezette commented some weeks ago about the role pretty much being a full-time one, and I think he's pretty close to the mark. The public see, or in fact mainly don't see, I suspect, the meetings, but it's all the stuff in between that really adds up. And I think that when you look around the council table now, there are very few councillors who are holding down full-time jobs, and I think that's a reflection of just the load that it is. And I think, I don't know whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. It's not a complaint, it's just a statement of the reality of the way it is. When I look back over the last six years, I think there's plenty to be pleased about. Highlights for me personally have been assisting with the regeneration of the company's governance structure, working with staff and other councillors in achieving an appropriate balance between debt repayment and investment in future facilities. The refocused and, I think, far more sensible strategic framework, I forget how many strategies we had, but it was probably two more than a simple person could count. And I think contributing to what I believe has been a much more progressive outlook for Dunedin. And I've got to say, I have really enjoyed the diversity of people sitting around this table. I haven't always agreed with all of them, but I've enjoyed their company, their generally good humour, and the debates we've had. And I often had people speaking to me in the street or saying, "Oh, why do you guys fight all the time?" And I really, it kind of bemuses me. I guess we do, because they say we do. We often disagree, but my experience has been that with one or two rare exceptions, the different political viewpoints around this table actually get on very well in terms of how they relate to each other individually. And I've got to say that I've thoroughly enjoyed both the company and the diversity of views around the table. And if I disagree with some of them, well, that's what democracy's all about. It's got nothing to do with falling out or arguing with people. When I contrast that diversity of people sitting around the table, and I contrast it with the representation around the table with what I witnessed when I first came to Dunedin and developed an interest in politics. And it's chalk and cheese, really. Under first past the post, it was essentially heavily dominated by older males, John accepted, and heavily business people focused. And in an STV environment, this table looks far more like the city, and I think the city's far better for it. It's even allowed for a mildly green-tinged progressive majority around the table this time. Some persist in characterising this as a voting bloc that caucuses and makes decisions that way. All I can say is that I don't know what I've done, but I've never been invited to one of these caucuses. And I'm not sure whether I should be pleased or offended. I recall similarly stupid things being said by Rodney Hyde on a local radio show regarding Greater Dunedin. He had seen us regularly meeting in the mayor's office and knew we caucused. A man of formidable talents, I'm sure, but I hadn't realised he had X-ray vision that enabled him to see through many walls from his office. We never did, and a more astute man might have looked at how we voted and used that to confirm whether or not we did or didn't. Along with the many positives, there are many things I shall not miss. The courier arriving at the door with papers and being able to immediately assess the wreckage of my weekend from the thickness of the envelopes. Every now and then you got lucky, there was a fat calendar that had been given to you by someone, and when you opened the envelope, it wasn't quite as bad as you thought. The occasional weeks from hell when DHB and council meetings coincided, and both parties also thought I'd enjoy three hundred pages of audit committee papers as well. And if someone said to me that I could avoid audit committee papers for the rest of my life, but I'd have to spend two months in the big brother house with Hillary and Lee, I'd take it. I've also learnt many things about myself I didn't previously know. I am apparently a troffer, who does these things only for the money. This also reinforces the other thing I found out about myself from the many comments in social media that I'm also stupid, because why would you employ a general manager to take over the role in your company at more than twice what you're going to get paid at council if you were really a troffer? But we are generally of remarkably stupid stock, if not corrupt, certainly in collusion with many and varied people with conflicts of interests and so on. It seems to work a bit like this on social media. Lilybit says Thompson will be claiming little green men from Mars are responsible for the debt next. Hypochondriac will respond, "I hadn't caught up with the likelihood of Thompson saying that, but it would come as no surprise that he's thinking this." Remarkably stupid replies, "That's the kind of explanation I'd expect from Thompson." Going down the gurgler then says, "Since Thompson claimed that little green men from Mars were responsible for the debt, everything I believed about him has been confirmed." And then Colonel Fathering Smith chimes in with, "I'm outraged that the debt has been caused by men from Mars, and Thompson won't take responsibility for it." And then Lilybit comes back and says that men who believe in little green men from Mars have got to go, and they must be voted out this time, and so on. So there are indeed some things I shan't miss, but I will miss the debate and the people I've had it with, and I shall also miss the many staff I've interacted with during this time. There has been considerable change in the top tier over the last four years in particular, and I think we have a team there now that reflects both the culture and ability we need as a community from our DCC management. The public service ethos is one that is often satirised, but it is public service and the rules are different. So Sue and your team, I thank you for the hard work you do. I wish you and whoever's sitting around this table after this weekend all the very best. Just as long as it doesn't include... I won't go there.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is councillor Pete.
Thank you, your worship. It's been a privilege. I'm a newbie, as you all know, and I shall be brief, commensurate with the number of years. Three, as brief as this. It's been a privilege because I've been at this table, just to use a word that councillor Thompson just used, diversity. A table that is full of varied experience, talents, length of service, and just, you know, good company. And so I'll miss all of you guys, but I'll see you. We're not such a big city, are we? It's been a privilege because of being able to work on some really important things, I think. The stuff that comes to mind, four bylaw, four new bylaws or revised bylaws. So I know more about beauty therapists and tattooists than I ever did before. The local alcohol policy was in there, and I think that was an amazing experience too, of a good number of councillors around that panel, led by the mayor. And I think we got to a good place, even though it's now under scrutiny, I think, in the paper as recently as this week. There have been three strategies in this developed, and I've made a modest contribution to those. The environment strategy, the arts and culture strategy, and most recently the parks and recreation one. Some of the achievements, I suppose, or highlights coming out apart from that, I think, include keeping the rates at under three percent and reducing debt at the same time, which is quite a remarkable achievement, I think. But our first decision was as much a big one as I think we've ever made, and that was the appointment of Sue Bedros as chief executive officer. And Sue, it's been a real privilege to work with you and see you working. You were faced with enormous challenges in the first year, and you succeeded in those and organising this council into a new way of, a new culture, I think. So, thank you very much. The biggest issue, I think, that's still ongoing, South Dunedin, and how it deals with extreme weather events, rainfall in the future. It's one that will challenge the council into the future, and I'm going to be maybe there to haunt you with a book about coastal hazard, sea level rise, and how councils and the government, what they're doing and what they're not doing to get ready for this. This is the biggest probably issue facing humankind in this century, and what we're doing in New Zealand about that. So above all, you know, some people have asked me, "Well, why spend only three years in the council?" Well, I've found, you know, the workload to be greater than I can deal with and find creative space. And so I'm leaving for that reason, in order to get back to some serious writing. I should have mentioned too, in terms of the things that have really set me buzzing about this last three years with my appointments, and thank you for doing this, appointments to ten organisations outside of the council, including obviously the community board and Target Museum and others, and they have been truly rewarding and enlightening too. So thanks a lot.
On the basis you allowed councillor Thompson to refer to a few notes. I stand and speak today with mixed emotions, a feeling of sadness and finality on the one hand, and a feeling of satisfaction and contentment on the other. I would have much preferred to quietly slip out those double doors for the last time without a valedictory speech. However, on reflection, I feel a sense of duty and responsibility to try and inspire future candidates to follow a governance role in local government. So to those future candidates, please don't hold back. There is a place for you wherever your, whatever your background is. Take me as an example. Left school at fifteen without any formal qualifications. Worked in sharing sheets as a shared hand. Learned to share completing my first one hundred at the age of sixteen. In the sharing sheet environment, I quickly realised that teamwork was imperative as you were all
In the sharing sheet environment, I quickly realised that teamwork was imperative as you were all reliant on one another and that the sharing sheet principle was still as strong as ever. This forum is an excellent example of where teamwork rises to the top more often than not. You simply cannot achieve anything on your own. So after being involved in several community organisations, I ventured into the local government sphere. By standing for the Waikato Coast Community Board in nineteen ninety-two, I believe councillor McTavish would have been in year two at primary school. The following term, I was the board chair, then in nineteen ninety-eight, I stood for the Waikato Coast Ward and was elected. Yes, there was an election. In two thousand and four, the council of the day decided to amalgamate the Waikato Coast with the Chalmers Ward, following an independent representation review. And yes, there was an election. So twenty-four years as a Waikato Coast Community Board member and twelve as a Chalmers Community Board member. A valuable, enlightening experience into local government. Boards are the perfect place to catch your teeth, so to speak, in preparation for council. On that note, community boards have and will continue to provide a vital link in the chain in many and varied ways as the voice feeding into council. To the new council, particularly councillors who haven't served on community boards, embrace them, utilise them. Their objectives are aligned with council, so collectively both entities can achieve mutually beneficial outcomes. I need to acknowledge all past and present members of both boards I served on. In particular, special mention to Jared Collings, Alistair Morrison, Lesley Denison of the Waikato Coast. And Chalmers Steve Walker and Jan Tucker. For the way they as chairs manage the sometimes delicate relationship of members with councillors and staff. I feel during the last representation review, the boards dodged a bullet as there seemed to be a real threat to their existence. So I wanted to share an experience that I had some years ago. Community boards have a statutory obligation to provide a first response in civil defence emergencies. And here's an example of the past. State Hollow One to the north from time to time is closed because of rain or snow events. So in this, in these situations, we're essentially in the North Coast are on our own in a civil defence sense. So what happens? Take this last major rain event to cause havoc some years ago, what did the board do, you might say? We woke to major flooding, State Hollow One was closed south of Waititi and south of Waikato. After phone calls from the fire chief, the police constable, the board chair, the deputy chair, it was clear the community was in a bit of strife. The fire chief explained that the brigade had been trying to save a couple of houses being flooded by pumping water into the already full Waikato Lagoon. To no avail. Also, the sandbags around the houses were about to be submerged. A suggestion was made about how quickly could the level of the lagoon be reduced? The culvert was not able to release water at anywhere near the rate as it was entering the lagoon. The landing question was crown land and administered by the Department of Conservation. Fortunately, the Otago in South Conserverd lived in Karatani. And she wasn't able to travel to work that day, so I made contact with her to seek her approval to have a digger breach the lagoon bank to quickly reduce the water level in an attempt to avoid. Several houses being flooded. All steps along the way were documented and reported to Neil Brown at the civil defence bunker. There were dozens of travellers stranded in the township who spent the night at the event centre, well fed and watered by the locals. A good example of a community board coordinating a civil defence response, working together as a team with emergency services. Securing resources needed to effectively respond to an event, essentially serving the community as legally required. Staff in my view are in an unusual workplace and their needs to be recognition, this workplace can be very difficult. For example, they need to absorb at times an unpredictable political scene where during a debate, a few words by a councillor or two. Can skittle weeks, months and sometimes years of hard slog developing a project, consulting, scoping, designing and budgeting. In a normal setting, staff are accountable to someone further up the chain. However, in council situation via the CEO, that's fifteen someones. So big ups to staff, not only in the situation described. But in my experience with staff, and there's been many of them over the years, that's experiences. I've enjoyed a superb relationship. Responses in almost all situations have been timely and helpful, resolving issues with constituents. To the handful of special staff who have a close working liaison with me, thank you all. These staff have gone way beyond the call of duty on many occasions. And yes, that bottle of wine that'll appear in your mailbox is a small token of my appreciation of your support. In this chamber, we often debate the level of debt that the city should have. There's always comment on financial constraints because of decisions made in the past, which is all about, oh, sorry, which is all part of a healthy debate. Yes, I accept that's democracy. For a moment, let's look back on capital expenditure invested in the city during the last couple of decades. Then relate that back to the council debt at around about two hundred and seventeen million. In the early mid nineteen nineties, council of the day adopted a major wastewater and water upgrade. Regarding wastewater, this involved building two secondary treatment plants, one at Green Island and one at Tahuuna. Both with outfalls, outfall pipes, one just under a kilometre and the other just over a kilometre long. Mozgul wastewater was connected to Green Island Treatment Plant via a pipe through the railway tunnel. So what was achieved? No more primary effluent discharged directly into the Otago Harbour from the numerous small treatment plants that were all decommissioned. No more primary treatment, sorry, no more primary treated effluent into the Tari River or the ocean adjacent to the St Kilda Beach. Significant environmental gains that met new national and regional standards for discharge. These plants were designed to absorb additional capacity as and when the population grew. We were future-proofing the city in terms of growth. Also remember, Ellington, Blanket Bay and Kills Point all received wastewater upgrades as well. The water upgrade was also being implemented during that same period, and what did that involve? Upgraded treatment plants at southern Mount Grand, the west Tari, the Waikato plant was also upgraded. The pipeline from Sullivan's Dam feeding Waititi and Warrington was established to provide a reliable supply. A dam at Mount Grand was built, a pipeline connecting Mount Grand and Mozgul was also established. And yes, up on the Deep Creek and Deepstream Catchment, twenty plus thousand hectares was purchased over time to allow protection of the valuable resource from permitted activities such as pastoral farming and forestry. So what cost to the city, you might say? My calculation is around about two hundred million mark for capital expenditure associated with water and wastewater. Then you add in Toy Two, the town hall, Forsyth Bar Stadium. How can it be that we still sit at around about two hundred and seventeen million council debt? Not a bad effort, financial constraints for sure. However, there will always be those constraints as council prioritise expenditure. All that achieved, still retaining a healthy standard and pause rating, credit rating with a stable outlook. A rates level that's affordable and councillor Pete has just alluded to. Affordable to the vast majority of citizens, with service levels and general terms being maintained. The amount of funding pumped into renewals has also been a hot topic, particularly when infrastructure such as stormwater is deemed to not have had the attention it should have had by way of maintenance. I believe it's important to remember why underfunding has occurred. Government introduced legislation back in ninety-six, ninety-seven, requiring councils to fund depreciation. And one of the challenges that Dunedin City had was what value did, in this example, stormwater infrastructure have? We're talking about pipes in the ground that have been there for seven or eighty years. Council decided to fund depreciation at less than a hundred percent, no longer do that now. And it was around about that eighty-five percent mark, based on three factors, age, condition and performance. And as the knowledge grew about the network, so did the forecasted budgets. Yes, there needs to be a focus and a commitment on the thirty-year infrastructure strategy. Where eight hundred million is projected to be spent over that thirty-year period in the Three Waters area. There will be other demands for competing expenditure just like the past. Council live with financial constraints, that's a fact. And some would argue it's a healthy discipline. So finally, to you, your worship and councillors here today, CEO Bidros. To councillors, mayors and CEOs that have served during my time, I'd just like to thank each and every one of you for the experience shared, the friendship made, good time had. It's been a rewarding experience working alongside you all. And times we have had our differences, at times we've had agreement, and that's the beauty of local government democracy. And lastly, to the new council, who will be sworn in later on this month, all the very, very best. And now I'll sit down between a hall and the ward for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I have to say, in preparing this speech, was I felt an enormously difficult task. And the reason for that is because I knew that councillor Thompson would outdo me on wit. And councillor Bizet and councillor Noon were certainly going to bet me on history. And councillor Pete to my left here was certainly going to bet me on eloquence. So I'm going with my usual earnestness approach. And I'm just going to hope for the best. And I'm very, very grateful to those who have spoken before me for using notes because that means I can get away with it too. Well, I have to say that it came as a bit of a shock back in twenty-ten when I was first elected. I stood because I felt that younger voices, that voices for sustainability and resilience and twenty-first century issues. Needed to be heard during the campaign and because I was encouraged to put my money where my mouth was and stand. I didn't really think that I had a high chance of getting elected. But STV, which has already been alluded to, and the new larger urban ward had different ideas, and so here I am. If I'm frank, walking into this organisation felt a little bit like going back in time. I was the youngest councillor by twenty years and I felt completely out of place. Processes and language felt antiquated and fairly impenetrable. There was a lot of reading, my weekends, and it's already been alluded to, my weekends disappeared under a mountain of reading. And every time the phone rang, I jumped, concerned that it might be David or someone else at the OTT ringing me, quizzing me on some subject that I was not yet on top of. Obviously, we've changed things a lot, but back then, council communications with the public were pretty old school. There was no social media presence, nothing was filmed, hello, channel nine. There was no FYI, and so in that sense, I felt reasonably isolated even from the constituents who voted me in. As an elected member to represent them. And so began one of the steepest learning curves of my life. The first thing I learnt was patience. I learnt that an incoming council's inheritance is no blank canvas. Very little can be changed overnight, in fact, it's difficult sometimes to change things at all. When systems have been designed into the very fabric of the city. Cementing themselves over time into citizens' daily routines and expectations. And democracy itself as a process takes time, planning and negotiation and big budgets. And in twenty-ten, with both the stadium and debt levels and projected rate rises heading simultaneously skywards. The city didn't have money to spend. And so as a council, we spent time focusing instead on the development of a vision for the city. And a strategic framework which councillor Thompson has already referred to. And that, I think, remains the thing that I'm most proud of in terms of what we've done over the last six years. I have to say though, that one of my greatest frustrations of my time in office has been the speed at which we've been able to deliver on those strategies. And that has been a simple case of resource constraint. So never again will I judge a council, particularly a cash-strapped one, solely based on their term in office. But rather on the years after they've left, when a new council is implementing the plans and strategies that that previous council worked hard to put in place. I've learnt a lot about the power of citizenship. It's a funny thing when you're a member of the public and you look at this council and you think, gee, that's an all-powerful entity. And then you become a councillor and you realise that actually it's the public that have the power. And that your ideas, as clear as they may be, are only as strong as the mandate that your community gives you. Not just on the day when you are elected, but on the days that follow, on the weeks that follow, in the months that follow, in the consultations that follow throughout your term in office. I love this. It's democracy in action. It gives me so much heart that that's the case. I just wish that our society was better at celebrating active citizenship and promoting it. I've loved watching people come in here and get that satisfaction of putting an idea out there and having us respond positively to it. And in fact, I've loved all of our community engagement opportunities. I think, formal and fraught as they are, and we are making improvements in those areas. In my experience, they virtually always ensure that we can get it out. That's a good punctuation. I've learnt how much other cities have to offer us. In two thousand and ten, I got an email from Germany that sounded far too good to be true. So I thought it was spam and I ignored it. Luckily, the author was actually quite persistent and kept on trying until I did eventually respond. It was a representative from the Global Network of Local Governments, committed to sustainability acronym, mysterious acronym of ITCLI. And they were inviting me to participate in a global pilot programme for young elected members that would connect me with cities around the world. I have to say, it was a godsend. Immediately I had a peer group, and it is the case that there are differences in generational ambitions in place. And these young people around the world were facing the same experience that I was and coming up against the same obstacles. Through this network, I've had opportunities to visit and learn from cities making really significant progress in addressing these big twenty-first century challenges. It's been very inspiring to see firsthand how these cities, particularly in Europe and the UK, but actually pretty much everywhere around the world. Are putting carbon neutrality at the centre of their city development strategies, at the centre of their economic development strategies. And we go to conferences and neighbouring mayors are sort of in a gentle kind of civic warfare about whose city is the greenest. I think this is the twenty-first century agenda. And if Dunedin were not to embrace it, when we are so well positioned to do so, it would be to us communities detriment. Thankfully, collectively, I think we are embracing this twenty-first century agenda. Over the past six years, I think our city has really started to blossom. Because of the efforts not only of council, but of individuals, of businesses, of institutions and organisations throughout the city. Instead of constantly wishing that we were bigger and taller and more populous. We've started celebrating the fact that we are a small city and all the benefits that that brings. We've embraced global citizenship, becoming a refugee resettlement location for people in need of sanctuary. Leading the way with our socially responsible investment policy. And joining a global alliance of cities dedicated to cutting carbon emissions. I'm proud of the work that we've done to move into a phase of heritage restoration and reuse. I'm proud of the work that we're doing, increasingly focusing our economic development resource, not on finding external solutions to jobs. But on strengthening homegrown industry and talent. And keeping the money in our economy through innovative work programmes around energy and local food systems. We're nurturing and supporting our creative community in unprecedented ways, and the UNESCO City of Literature, I think, is a highlight worth mentioning. I think we've also beefed up, or started beefing up at least, the resources dedicated to protecting and nurturing our natural environment. It was an absolute privilege to chair the first Ti Aotearoa partnership meeting on Friday. That group of people are amazing and they have so much to contribute. We have cycle networks in the forward budgets and we've started work on this very exciting revamp of the CBD. So all in all, I'm really proud of what this governance team, and I say team because I mean that, I think we've worked generally pretty well together. I'm really proud of what we've achieved as a team, particularly over this last term. We've outperformed financial targets. We've aligned our city's strategic and policy framework with internal processes. To ensure that our decisions do take into account social, cultural, environmental and economic needs. And we've commenced implementation. That's not bad, actually, for three years. It was enormously difficult call to stand down. I think the next three years here will be really exciting for Dunedin. And I am a little bit jealous of the incoming council and the fact that they'll get to commence that or to continue that implementation. And all of the processes that sit around that. But actually, it's the people that I'm going to miss the most. Many of you, particularly those that have been here for both terms, have offered me support and guidance that I would have been substantially more at sea without. Kate, in particular, you were incredible in my first few months. I remember in the first week over coffee, you said to me, even if I don't agree with what you're proposing. I'll help you navigate the processes to ensure that you get your ideas in front of council for debate. And you did. And you've taught me much about collegiality and what it is to be a true champion of democracy in that process. So you're an excellent chief executive. You're as humble as you are skilled. Thought this would happen. Well, I will thank you. You made me laugh, but that's good. Dunedin is very fortunate to have you at the helm of this organisation. Your dedication to Dunedin and to its residents shines in everything that you do. And I feel very lucky to have worked with you and your 600-odd-strong team, including all of the wonderful new talent that's walking in the doors. I would extend, and that family, I'd like particularly mention the GSOs who have been there through thick and thin, supporting the team as we go about our work. I'd also like to thank the building attendants for the number of times that they've had to let me into buildings because I've left my tag at home. Dave, thank you for the leadership you've shown over the past six years. You've balanced bold visionary steps on one hand with pragmatism and compassion on the other. You've fielded criticism for problems not of your making whilst channeling resources into solutions as quickly as they could be mustered. In particular, I've appreciated your emphasis on cross-city partnerships and alliances, which will stand the city in good stead for years to come. Finally, to the friends and family that have supported me privately as I've strived to do justice to this very challenging and very public role. Many have put up with me being a distracted, part-time, forgetful friend in relation for six long years, and I'm looking forward to remedying that. But I won't be going far. This beautiful city is home. The very best of luck to those of you who are staying on. I'll be making the most of my status as Citizen McTavish. And you'll likely see me as a submitter at the other end of the table in the next few years.
Dave, thank you very much. Well, you'll be pleased to hear that I haven't really prepared a speech. I think the good thing about being on the council for 30 years is you forget all your achievements. And you've also got to be very careful that extrapolating on any achievements you may think you have achieved of some note, that you don't damn yourself with faint praise. So I won't mention anything in particular. However, I have been here for 30 years, and it was before you were born, Jinti, and I think probably Erin as well. So it goes back a long, long time. One thing, and councillor Thompson alluded to it before, about the reasons why he was pulling off from the council, and the same with myself. It has, over the years, changed quite dramatically the role of a councillor. And it is, in my view, a full-time job. And quite frankly, I don't think that I've been given the job justice certainly for the last couple of years anyway, because of the workload that's involved. It is just quite... I know you can gauge your own amount of work that you wanted, but if you're honest with yourself, which I certainly was then, I didn't think I was doing the job justice because of the time that was involved in it. I've been looking at some of the prospective candidates who are wishing to stand for council, to be elected to council here. And they talk about what they would like to do for the city. If I was a younger man standing for the council today, I wouldn't be saying to the electorate out there, "I want to do this, or I want to do that." What I would be saying is, "I want to work with a council that is going to deliver the best result for the city." Because I think that's really what being a councillor is all about. Not your own particular goals, you can work towards them. If you take along six or seven voters with you and the staff, that's fine, you can get what you want. But you've got to work with people, and that's what I would do. Perhaps, taking the risk of damning myself with faint praise, I have looked back over the years at some of the things that I've been involved with that I'm very proud of. And it goes back quite some time, although councillor Benj Pope will certainly remember. The corporatisation of the council trading operations, I had a significant role to play in that. And I think with the corporisation of our gas department, electricity and the forestry, that was quite a significant move. It was the first time that had been done from a local authority throughout New Zealand. We did have a few ups and downs because councillor Thompson referred himself as a troffer. I was accused of double dipping. In fact, my double dipping went to court. And although it wasn't proved that I was double dipping, it was something that was acknowledged, but nothing came of it. But I can tell publicly for the first time, the money that I did receive, I gave it back to the council. So I certainly wasn't double dipping. But anyway, I was also instrumental, I think, in getting the Economic Development Committee into the standing committees. We had a small economic development group, and once again, I think councillor Benj Pope was on that, where we worked very hard to convince the council that we should focus on economic development. And I chaired that committee for probably two years before we went into a full council standing committee. Councillor Noon mentioned the infrastructure that's been set up in the last 15 to 20 years. And I am very proud of being associated with the group of councillors that stuck together over many years. And I know we were branded as big spenders, and we were spending a lot of money, but we felt it was necessary. We got the appropriate advice. We were caught in what you'd call a perfect storm of finance or a lack of finance and the time it took to get particular projects onto the final stage. I'm thinking now of the town hall, the upgrade of the art gallery, Toito Museum, not to mention the likes of the wastewater that Andrew mentioned, and also, of course, the stadium. So they are all projects that I've voted for and felt very, very happy in doing that. And I think it will take time, but certainly at some time in the future, maybe 15 or 20 years from now, people will look back and say, "That was a time when this city made some real progress." We've put in infrastructure that's going to last for another 50 to 100 years. I've served with some very good councillors over the years and some wonderful staff. I'd have to say, the councillors that I've worked with, I won't mention any councillor's name because it would do the service to people sitting around this table. But I have had some very close relationships with councillors in the past, and probably the one that I have in that photograph there, as you all had a look, there's an array of talent in there that I'm sure you'll be quite interested with. Some very successful people there, they all stood for the right reasons. There was no finances, no money, no council was paid in those days. And that was a very good council, so I certainly enjoyed that. And also the staff, we've had some wonderful, talented staff in Dunedin. I don't know what it is with our city, but we seem to develop staff over the number of years and then they're shoulder tapped and away they go. There's a whole raft of former staff that are performing very high-profile jobs all around the world, or have performed high-profile jobs all around the world in local authorities. And they all served their time at the Dunedin City Council. There's a couple of names I would like to mention. One is Andrew. Andrew's been a mate of mine for a long time. And I appreciate the work that he's done with the council and friendship and the understanding that we've had in supporting each other. And David as well, earlier on and in the last few years. Good to have you back here, David. And I have a huge amount of respect for the work that you do. Also, I'd like to mention three staff members in particular. And I'm pleased to hear and see that they're all here. We've got Pam Jordan and Jenny Lattan and Lynne. So thank you, girls, for coming along today. You must have been reading my notes. But you have been putting up my little idiosyncrasies for a long time. You've done a tremendous amount of work for me and I really do appreciate it. It's just been fantastic that I can ring you guys up at any stage and you'd make sure that what I was asking for really happened. So thank you very much, it's been great. I'd like to thank the voters of Dunedin. They've elected me over 10 terms, 30 years. And I do appreciate their support, I think it's been fantastic. I'd like to think that I've given them good value for money, but they'll be the ones that decide on that. It only remains for me to say all the best to those of you who are seeking election around the table here. Good luck. And I'm delighted to say I'm not going to vote you.
Councillors, can I invite any of the rest of you who wish to make any comments, tributes, audio to... Councillor Wilson?
Thank you, Bishop. I'm going to do these in no particular order, and there'll be considerable things that I forget to say, but I want to keep them brief. First to Andrew, I'd like to say thank you very much for the mentoring he did, both as a councillor, one of the far-reaching ones, what he's done for rural people and the voice he's done for all rural people in his time here. But the substantial work he did to infrastructure, his work on all of the hearings committees and how he assisted me in understanding the processes, it's been absolutely great. And what I really appreciate is I never felt, if you had a disagreement with Andrew, you could carry on and have a discussion about how to process it. And he's always been willing to meet the middle ground and been very active in trying to come to consensus around the table with motions, which has been great. Richard, your humour, your clarity of thought, your questioning of resolutions has been fantastic. Your quick wit has been greatly appreciated in how you've always managed to make a tense moment less tense. And your language, the ones that I've won, I can remember is your recovering bagpiper status. And those other quick terms which made us all see you in a different light has been revolutionary. John, your dedication to South Dunedin, a great voice for that. And I think the things that you missed out talking about, the Masters Games in Toito, which I think you've served on, Toito for 27 years and Masters Games since inception, I think, which has been fantastic efforts. But how you've supported the cycleway project throughout, the good, the bad and the ugly, it's been fantastic. Thank you and appreciated. Neville, the diversity that you've brought to the table, both with your literature, your environment and your thinking, has been greatly appreciated. And your skill mix with regional council as well, thank you. And Jinti, the energy passion, youthfulness and dot-dot-dot, because I think I might leave that for another moment anyway. Thank you.
Councillor Stans?
We're losing some serious skill around this table in this election. And I'd like to sort of mention a little bit about each of the councillors who are standing down. Councillor Bezette, of course, was the person who got me interested in serving on council. He probably doesn't realise this, but in the years that I was general manager at Fisher &amp; Pickle and we were looking at growing that plant quite quickly, the support we got from the city and from the economic development area was significant. And I always remember councillor Bezette coming out to Fisher &amp; Pickle when we were trying to pitch for some rates relief to enable us to take another step in the journey. And I, at that time, thought, "When my time comes at the end of working for Fisher &amp; Pickle, maybe I should be looking at giving back to the city and following in the footsteps of John Bezette, who had shown me what cities can do in small ways that make a very big difference." Councillor Noon, always pleasant, always focused in debate on the issue, not on the personalities. You are a gentleman, and it's been mentioned that you mentored many of us. But that approach, that ability to be focused on the issue and not on the person has really stood out to me, and I really appreciated that. Richard Thompson, who saved me. I had been deputy chair of finance, serving under Richard Walls. And I could see this approaching danger of being asked to take up the role of chair. I've served on lots of audit risk committees. And while finance, I know, is essential in business and you have to have an understanding of it, it's not the thing that really rotates my wheels. And so Richard coming along and taking up the role of chair of finance enabled me to take a long sigh of relief. And you have done that really well, and with a degree of humour. And if anybody thinks the journey has been an easy one in the finance area, it certainly hasn't. And I think we have really benefited from the skills that Richard has brought and his ability to get to the heart of the matter. And again, focus on the issue, not on the emotional edges of the issue, which are always there, but are really irrelevant to what you're trying to achieve. Neville, you came at the right time. You know, when I first joined council, things environmental, apart from sewerage, probably didn't exist on our agendas at all. And as we were coming into that era of trying to look at our strategies and get a more forward-looking council, you arrived right at the right time. And I've really appreciated your input. You chose the right time to come here and you've had a significant impact. Finally, Jinti, probably had the most impact of all on me. And I'll get emotional about this, but as I mentioned, I hadn't thought anything about environment at all. Yes, I'd thought about it at Fisher &amp; Pickle and recycling cardboard and polystyrene and trying to avoid money going out on the skip. But in terms of a city and the impact of a city on environment and how the environment is important in many ways to the vibrancy of a city, I hadn't given much thought to that. And Jinti brought that to me. She changed my thinking. And this council is going to miss her input. She has been exceptional, absolutely exceptional. And I'm really sorry to see her go. Jinti, all the best.
Further speakers? Well, I have to say that I concur with all the comments already made about those councillors. So I'll not say much, and indeed, I think it's my responsibility to offer the communities as much as my appreciation of the contribution made by each of the people that is stepping down. I think the context is that the expectations of our community on councillors are rising. But praise and appreciation for the work that councillors do is not rising at the same rate, in my observation. For instance, the blowtorch of criticism about council failings is often unfairly applied to councillors when the lapses have been operational. And no one comes on to council intending to make mistakes, whether they're responsible for them or not. And I also wonder if many of the community appreciate the expectations that councillors increasingly have placed on them or that councillors increasingly place upon themselves. I'm aware, very aware, of the work behind the scenes that councillors perform, the hours some put in and the care with which they consider matters that we're responsible for. So I think it's my place to express the community's appreciation of what you have contributed for the wellbeing and advancement of our community and our city over the various periods that you've served. Specifically, I'd say that at 30 years, John must be one of the longest-serving councillors in Dunedin City Council's history. He must be getting up there. He'd been deputy mayor, and as someone else mentioned, I think councillor Wilson, longtime supporter of the Masters Games, Toito. And I recall a comment that a previous CEO said about you, "He's his own man," he said. No, straightforward and independent thinking, and your time here has encompassed enormous change, and so thank you for your contribution to that. Andrew Noon, the original grassroots representative, and does it so well, extraordinary representation of your community. Barely a local issue that Andrew doesn't know about, know what the issue is, and knows how he's already resolved it. Also, an enormous contribution to the RMA process over the years in planning, you've had a profound effect on our city over the last eighteen years, and I thank you for that. Neville, quite performer behind the scenes, actually, especially given your vast and deep understanding of both environmental and the arts, particularly literary arts, obviously. I really valued your support on the UNESCO Creative Cities effort, and our Edinburgh Sister City work, and indeed, the link between the two. You put in a considerable amount to that. And also, I thank you for your enduring efforts around the environment, and your, your work with both Hereweka Harbour Cone and Pukakuta Trust, both of them very close to your heart. So in a range of quite different areas, you've contributed a lot in the short time that you've been here, so thank you. Richard, I've been impressed and sometimes bewildered by the fact that while your strength is in the finance area, and it is considerable, you come at it from a completely unexpected perspective a good deal of the time. You're a real lateral thinker, if ever there was one, and I've really appreciated that, because it's enabled me to see some ostensibly quite straightforward financial matters from a different light, and it's been extremely helpful. Through the period of challenge and change that our financial, finance area's gone through over the past three years, your knowledge and understanding has been absolutely invaluable. And it was critical to have a very financially literate and experienced business head in that role, so all credit to you for that, thank you. Jinti, much has been said about your work ethic, ethic, and I know that you've maintained that at some considerable personal cost. More important has been the effect of that work. It'd be fair to say that no councillor has put more heart and mind into the concerns of this council and this community than councillor McTavish. And no councillor, I believe, has had more effect, more positive effect, over the last, certainly the last two. Community has an extraordinary amount to thank you for, and so does council. Even the councillors that don't share your values and your beliefs, indeed, some who profoundly resent them, have acknowledged your contribution to all of our understanding of a number of issues. You've led the way also in communicating with not just your constituency in the community, and you've simultaneously applied pragmatic, evidential analysis with a moral measure to issues that have benefited everyone's understanding, and I thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for that? Well, the final item on the agenda, it's my privilege to sum up the term with some final observations. I think you'd have to say it's been a term of many achievements and some challenges. The challenges we all know about, the city fleet fraud, the contract supervision around drainage infrastructure for South Dunedin cycleway mistakes. But in my view, they'd be more balanced, more than balanced by the achievements. I'd have to say that this council, I've only been here for three terms, but this council has been the best mix of talent and diversity in my time. This has been a very good council, in my view, and it most often came to consensual decisions based on thorough consultation and good evidence-based advice. Now, you can disagree with that if you were in the minority in a couple of votes, but the proofs and the results, our strategies have been mentioned, they are a considerable achievement for the future of the city. The city of literature, the heritage renewal and street art, the economic development progress, we've got more jobs, we've got more businesses, we've got some GDP growth well above what we used to have. We've strengthened the very fruitful relationships with China to the benefit of the community. And what characterised all of these achievements were the partnerships that enabled them. Almost everywhere where this council has been successful, we've held hands with some other institution or organisation or business, and we've achieved a tremendous amount more as a result of that. And mostly we've done it all within budget. So our annual plans, which are really the focus of, the key focus of the year, because that's what sets the tone for the next twelve months, and that sets the parameters for the next, they've been overwhelmingly and increasingly tight and sound. Challenges ahead. I think it'll be, the first one, of course, is climate change challenges, effects, or transition climate change effects. And I think it'll be important to clarify the extent to which the responses to these challenges need to be dealt with operationally or by governance. Just as the response to the city fleet fraud required governance determination to reform council systems, which allowed it in the first place, and then operational changes. So the responses to climate change effects, such as excessive stormwater or rising groundwater, will need to be arrived at based on sound evidence, and then expressed operationally, with the concomitant governance understanding of the wider social and community implications that will need to be addressed over a much longer period of time. We've got housing challenges, we will always have, as I think councillor Bezette mentioned, financial challenges, we will always be constrained because of the needs to address or acknowledge the affordability issues with our community. So that will never go away, it's about cutting our cloth, but still maintaining a forward momentum. And I think that the overarching issue confronting this council, and indeed, all councils around New Zealand in the next three years, is frankly, the constitutional position of local government vis-à-vis central government. And this is coming to a head, and expressed in a range of areas, including alcohol control, sustainable funding for local government, Three Waters, regional development, and what the very shape of local government will need to be into the future if local governments do remain relevant, representative, and effective. On the positive side, there are definitely some fantastic opportunities ahead. And in that context, it's pertinent to ask what this council is leaving for the next council. Well, I'm very proud of the fact that we're closing this term with a much lower council debt than forecast, with promises regarding rates increases kept, with council processes and functions operating better than we found them, with clear community strategies and visions agreed to, and with progress made on achieving their aims, albeit sometimes slow. Some of the aspirations and the strategies have been slow to implement, and that is frustrating, frustrating, but at least offers the opportunity for the next council to immediately pick up on those. And that's, it's a challenge, but I think it's an opportunity. The opportunities provided for, by our relationships in China and elsewhere, our UNESCO Creative Cities status, our greatly improved debt position, the opportunities provided by the renaissance of our heritage and artistic consciousness, and so much more, gives me confidence that the next council has plenty of scope to achieve a tremendous amount more. So I'd like to thank all the councillors who have contributed to those achievements, and to that legacy of this term, if you like. An enormous thank you to the CEO and her staff who facilitated and informed so much of what we achieved. That is assuredly the partnership that is most important. It is an essential foundation without which council can achieve nothing. It's the relationship between the executive and her team and elected members, that is essential. So that brings this meeting to a close. See you all on the other side.